I'd like to call the order of the meeting for the workshop for Mayor and City Council of City, Tony Town, the month of April, and ask Councilman Zabetti to lead us in the pledge.
(inaudible)
Before we get into agenda, I just wanted to make a comment or two that's not on the agenda, and that's just simply to welcome once again Marvin Flickinger to our meeting, and thank him for his fifty-three years of, is it fifty-four years of service to the people, the citizens of Tony Town, mostly the men of Tony Town. I don't know if we have any women clients or not, but I know that Marvin's been gotten here for a long time, and he's retired as of the last Friday in March, and he will be missed. I thought you were going to be on some grand voyage somewhere, and if I'd known you were going to be here, I'd have had a fancy scroll and trumpets and things like that to proclaim your service, but we want to sincerely thank you from the bottom of our heart for the many years of service to our citizens, and you'll be missed, but enjoy your retirement.
I want to thank the community for supporting me. I had a good run, and I see a lot of changes in Tony Town in fifty-four years.
I bet you have.
Most of them good, there are a few that these little crew. But overall, it's been a good time, had a lot of fun at work, and then miss a lot of people, conversations.
I'm not sure how many of you recall, and probably Carl, you do, but he had one of these seats up here for a while.
Yes.
When were you on council, Marvin?
Four.
When?
Four years.
Yeah, but when?
When?
Seventy-eight days ago.
Seventy-eight. My goodness.
I thought you were saying nineteen oh four.
A man of all seasons there. Thank you again very much. First order of business is the approval of the minutes for three meetings we've had: the March fourth meeting, March ninth meeting, and the March twenty-sixth budget workshop. Is there any additions or corrections to any of these minutes? Nothing may well stand for approval on Monday night. Next we have my State of the City report. It's a little later than normal this year. We had, I prepared this, as I typically do, toward the end of January, the early part of February, and I haven't had the opportunity to deliver it. I thought it would be a good opportunity to deliver the State of the City report while we had the privilege of Carroll Media, Carroll County Media Center with us, so if you will bear with me for a few minutes, I'll go through the city, State of the City report. The report will be, can be found in its entirety on our website, so please, if you want to, if I go too quickly or miss something that I've said, then feel free to pull it up there. Once again, it's time to share with you a reflection on the accomplishments and the challenges we have faced together this past year. With a true sense of pride and accomplishment and optimism for 2015, I again present to you the annual State of the City report. This report will be my last one for my second term as mayor. The time has certainly flown by, and when I look back over almost eight years, I think of all the strides we have made, it's truly mind-boggling. We've come such a long way and accomplished so much, and as I considered whether to run for a third term, I reflected on the past accomplishments and thought of accomplishments yet to be, and made a decision to seek that third term. And with your help and support and diligence of our city council, and the full effort of our staff, we'll accomplish even more. I always look forward to this time, when I could share with you the highlights of the progress we've made together over this past year, and we're blessed to live in this special place. Not only we are fortunate to be in the most beautiful part of the state, but our strategic location offers businesses a unique opportunity to grow and prosper. It's to say nothing of the advantages of living in a small town and simply being able to know your neighbors. Even with all these advantages, it takes people to accomplish all that we do, and we are blessed in having a city workforce that thinks of you, our citizens, first. The unattiring efforts of our city staff on your part are what helps us accomplish so much, even when resources are limited. And while this is important, we couldn't even hope to accomplish what we do without you, our citizen volunteers. A city slogan that we came up with a few years ago says it all: Neighbor Helping Neighbor. I want to thank the many of you who serve our fellow citizens, by the time you spend on city committees and boards, and by those you help, those who help with youth activities, and the one that volunteers for church boards and committees, and those who volunteer for our schools, and many of those who spend time working with the underprivileged, or the elderly, or the handicapped, all of you who show concern for your neighbor, or simply stop and pick up a piece of litter you see blowing down the street. You're what make Tony Town special. Thank you for this great town. This past November, we elected a new administration in Annapolis. We sent fifty-eight new delegates to the House, and twelve new faces to the Senate, and the complexion of our county's Board of Commissioners has changed too. I know that many of you may be thinking, "So what? It's just politics. Politics is politics, and nothing will change." And one could argue that this skepticism is well-earned, and maybe it'll even prove true, but I've just returned from the annual Maryland Mayors Association meeting in Annapolis, where I had the opportunity to visit one-on-one with the governor and lieutenant governor, or senators and delegates, and I'll tell you, there's electricity in the air, and a sense of optimism that I've never experienced in all my years in local government. It's more important than ever to reach out to our representatives and let them know of your support, and also let them know your needs and opinions. I'm convinced they will listen. With all that optimism aside, we're still struggling with another year of sluggish economic times. Hard realities of running a city are not much easier in 2015 than they were in 2014. During the past several years, your city has struggled to keep pace with an ever-increasing demand of city services, and an ever-demanding state and federal regulations. We have kept pace, and this might be very well the highest achievement of your city council to date. Nevertheless, all of us have felt the increasing pressures of rising water and sewer fees, the pressures of new state and federal demands on our finances, and we've been able to hold the line each year on property tax increases, but this is becoming more and more difficult with each year's budget. We currently are evaluating the most recent version of the county property tax assessments, and it appears that we may have had a further property deflation. We'll continue to do our best. Each year, your mayor and city council gather along with various department heads to discuss upcoming projects and the overall direction the city will take. This occurs prior to budgeting time, which has already begun. Our semi-annual retreat this year was held on the twenty-fourth of January. We discussed a lot during our session, and one area of prime concern was the interest in sustaining the downtown business growth that has occurred since streetscape. To accomplish our goals for a vibrant downtown, all the stakeholders will have to work together. This includes private citizens, homeowners, landlords, the business commuting, and other interested parties, and your council, working together to make our downtown a destination point. We're looking at ways to improve, ways of improving building maintenance, and encourage retail development, particularly at the street level, and ways to hold accountable those who look to maximize their profits at the expense of their neighbors. As is my custom, I have solicited the input from our department heads, and city managers and premier, and city manager in preparing this report. As I've previously mentioned, U.S. citizens are truly blessed to have such a talented group of employees at our service. Municipal government is unique in that it's the government closest to the people, and it is the first point of contact where their needs are met: the budget. Each year, your mayor and council, with the help of city staff, and by approval, each year, your mayor, with the help of the city staff and approval of the city council, is charged with preparing a balanced budget to fund the services you've come to expect. During the times of sluggish economic conditions, the task is doubly challenging. Throughout my tenure as mayor, we have cut expenses and reduced and delayed capital improvement projects, and walked the tightrope between the positive and the negative. We're at a point where we need to upgrade certain systems. Our computer services server is badly out of date. The system used to determine our water and sewer uses is over twenty years old and prone to errors. The radios and some of our police crosters need to be upgraded to a digital system in order to be able to communicate with county law enforcement teams. All this costs money. We did receive welcome news from the governor a week, a week or so ago, when he informed the local governments that he increased the funding in his budget for road repair and related items, HURs is what we refer to them as. Police aid is also fully funded in his budget. There is some optimism that additional new housing will begin this spring, so things are a bit more promising as we look toward 2016. Still, we are challenged to fund the city's services without a burden of imposing more taxes on an already overtaxed citizen base. I know I speak for the council when I offer my commitment to do my best to hold the line on increased taxes once again. Economic Development. Agent McCormick is our Economic Development Coordinator, Development Director, and Coordinator of the Main Street Program, and Jello Zabetti is her council liaison. The mission statement she has adopted for departments says it all: to retain, procure, and increase business, employ, and revenue for the cities, employment and revenue for the cities, City of Tony Town by development partnerships and community commitment. Some accomplishments we can be proud of during the past year and quarter: two new businesses in the downtown, the Rusty Nook and Reminiscence Remix Nutrition Store. We worked in concert with Carroll County Hospital Center to bring a primary care services to town and additional doctor services. We provided training and resources for new and current businesses that enhance the employee's skill and business owner's skill and knowledge through Miller Business Center, the Carroll County Community College, Carroll County Chamber of Commerce, and Maryland Main Street Program. We continue to increase our attendance each month at our monthly networking breakfast, which next one is Friday, by the way, and we have had as high as one hundred and two in attendance here, and the smallest was around thirty due to the weather. We've worked, the average is about sixty. We've worked in tandem with the volunteers who helped create two successful events: the Wine Art and Jazz Festival, which raised over twenty-five hundred dollars for our caring and sharing ministries, and our Harvest Fest in Tales of Tony Town was again a great success. We raised over five hundred dollars for the Humane Society, and five hundred dollars for caring and sharing. We procured a fifty thousand dollar community legacy facade grant that can be applied for this year by both commercial and for the first time residential applicants, and if approved by the Maryland Historic Trust. Tony Town was one of twelve Maryland municipalities who received the American Express Small Business Promotional Package, which included tote bags, and flags, and banners, and giveaways, giveaways to promote Shop Small, which is part of their national effort. Part of municipal team effort in close association with the Carroll County Economic Development Commission, who champion the Carroll County Downtown Partnership and promotional services, have banners and billboards throughout the county promoting the eight municipalities and their downtown business areas. Continue to improve the value of Tony Town record, which will generate new visitors and residents to Tony Town. The access circulation is over six thousand for this paper. Continue to build relationships and partnerships with organizations and groups and individuals that promote goodwill and increase visibility in a positive way to the people in and outside of Tony Town. Our Main Street Group is also gathering with, or partnering with, the Parks and Recreation Department to co-sponsor some events this coming season. Tony Town this year, again, was awarded the prestigious Banner City designation, the fourth year in a row, by the Maryland Municipal League, which recognizes cities and towns throughout the state for their contributions to the improved lifestyle of their residents. Parks and Recreation. Visiting with our Parks and Recreation Department is always a pleasure. Bob Mitchell brings a great deal of enthusiasm to his job, and it shows in his accomplishments. Diane Foster is the council liaison. The Parks and Recreation Department has made many strides this past year, with maintenance of facilities of our utmost importance in providing citizens of our great city with the best possible parks and recreation experience available. Some goals we hope to accomplish here include renovations of the Roth Avenue Pili Ground, and recently, the city purchased a forty-acre parcel of new parkland off of Fringe Road. This parkland is adjacent to a planned natural area, Echo Park, but known as Ballenger Park on Littlestown Pike. It's been my goal for some time to begin development of this passive park, an area for enjoyment by all. It's been a proposal from a Carroll County, there's been a proposal from the Carroll County Astronomical Society to locate a public observatory on the newly acquired parcel. We're in process of annexing this parcel, currently beyond the city limits, so that development may proceed. I need to again recall our commitment and the dedication of our volunteers who show, to show the numerous sports, who volunteers of the numerous sports programs in the city. With the size of our city's sports programs ever increasing, the task of coordinating these programs is continually more difficult. But with that being said, our volunteers tirelessly achieve this task year in and year out, and we owe them a huge debt of gratitude. If it weren't for these wonderful volunteers and countless hours of their time, our youth wouldn't be able to have the best sports program in the county. That being said, our core of our volunteer base handles this with the utmost dedication and commitment that is second to none. Are you thinking of volunteering? This is a great place to start. Public Works Department is the department that touches everyone. Rick Weaver is the department head, and he supervises not only the utility crew, but the city's physical plant, physical plant, and the wastewater treatment plant as well. Joe Vigliotti is the council liaison. We have a couple of capital projects that we have begun. In an effort to make sure that the discharge leaving our wastewater treatment plant is safe for the bay, we've begun an enhanced nutrient management program, or ENR, upgrade of our facility. We hope to have this completed in 2016. Another project that we've been working for, for the past couple of years, is bringing a new well into production, well number seventeen. Engineering staffers have delayed the completion of this project, but I'm pleased to say that the end is in sight. Your council agreed to purchase a leak detection system last year to help find undisclosed water line leaks and facilitate their repair. We have completed an inspection of these lines and found four leaks, and have since been repaired. The HVAC upgrades have been carried out for several city buildings, resulting in more energy-efficient city. MDE grants helped fund this effort. We've applied for additional grant through the Maryland Energy Administration that will convert about ninety-four streetlights from the old Mokry vapor type to the LED type. LED lights require approximately fifty percent less energy to operate. One area I've talked much about, and I'm a bit discouraged about, is our recycling effort. Two hours ago, we provided more convenient recycling containers for your use. However, after all this time, the dramatic increase in recycling that I'd hoped for has not occurred. The fact that recycling numbers have slipped a bit in 2014. Recycling pays. For every ton of trash that is recycled, we don't have to pay a county tipping fee. I mentioned earlier, we as your council will do our best to keep from increasing taxes, but we need your help too, and recycling can be a huge help. Recycling is easy. Recycling material can be mixed, it doesn't have to be sorted as it did in the early days, and if you're unsure of what can be recycled, check our website, or give us a call, www.tonytown.org will have a list of materials that are, that go in the recycling container. The city is looking for ways to encourage more folks to participate in recycling, including a pay-as-you-throw trash system, which I call forced recycling. I know you would not think of asking your neighbor to pay for your water and sewer use, why ask them to pay for your trash disposal? Planning and zoning. Jim Whiteprack is the city's planning and zoning administrator and code enforcement officer. He's in charge of working with potential and existing residences and businesses to ensure that the city's codes are, and statutes are followed. The council liaison is Mayor Pro Tem Corley Ball. Calendar of the year in 2014 showed some gains in terms of construction. Of the hundred and twenty-one zoning certificates issued, twenty-seven were for new homes, up from nineteen in 2013. This is an encouraging increase. The new home zoning certificates represent a growth that over the prior year, prior year have not grown very much, but they've been up for three years in a row. We saw continued construction activity along Antra Boulevard corridor with the completion of the new Sheet Store at the Roundabout, the site of the Highs Dairy Store, and Shopping Center has plans approved to reconfigure the access to that site, and will conclude, include the demolition of the former movie gallery building, will connect the shopping center to Antra Boulevard when completed. On the code enforcement front, we logged in a hundred and twenty-three code violation cases. We've resolved a hundred and seventeen of those, and sent seventy-eight formal violation notices, along with numerous written warnings, code reminder notices, and follow-up letters. We also continue to assess fines and violations, and often collecting them when properties change hands. We do eventually collect the fines from owners, or the controlling parties of the properties, offsetting a portion of the property, of the department's operating expense. The planning and zoning department continues to work to ensure Tony Town remains current with the state required regulations and reporting regarding planning. Our community comprehensive plan was last updated in 2010. Numerous requirements from the state have changed since the plan was updated, and discussions will begin in 2014 on updating the plan again. While the plan update may continue to start with a vision of our city's future, how we work toward that vision has become increasingly driven by environmental constraints, not part of the picture when we last updated the plan. Work continued on analysis of environmental impacts and growth, and notably those affecting our watersheds, and ultimately the Chesapeake Bay. Jim Whiteprack continues serving as Tony Town's representative on the Carroll County Waste Board, Carroll County Water Resource Coordination Council, and has done a great job in representing the town's interests with that organization. In 2014, the group brought to closure a project of over a year in the making, an agreement between the eight municipal counties, eight municipal governments in Carroll County, and the Carroll County Board of Commissioners, to enter into a National Pollutant Discharge Limitation System Permit, NPDES, is how we refer to that. And that agreement is to share for the mandated stormwater quality improvement projects, with the county contributing significant capital costs for these municipal projects, along with energy, engineering, and project management contributions. To the best of our knowledge, no other jurisdictions have achieved this level of cooperation and coordination between municipal and county officials regarding NPDES compliance, and each local government owns its own stormwater infrastructure. Please be on the lookout for the comprehensive plan topics in our Tony Town Planning and Zoning Committee agendas in 2015. The planning commission meets regularly, and the meetings are open to the public. The commission meets on the last Monday of each month, and their agendas are viewable each year or before each meeting on our website by clicking on Find an Event from the homepage. Our police department. One of the biggest assets of our police department, of the city, is her police department. Chief Bill Tyler heads this department, and Rick House is the council liaison. We are fortunate to have such a well-run and professional force at our service, our officers continue to be recognized as diligent defenders of our citizens. Community outreach plays a major part in our department's success. Once again, we hosted a youth police academy that opens the doors to those who are interested in law enforcement as a possible career. This involved our officers teaching classes and communicating with groups of fine young citizens, and the program was a success. We've already planned this year's dates for the academy, and the first session begins next Monday on April four thirteenth. Please check our website or the police department for further details. Officers are also involved in a program that teaches drug awareness to elementary and middle school students over the course of the school year. The department, in an effort to encourage our citizens, initiated a give-back program. Where the citizens who earned compliance by wearing their seat belts while they drove, were pulled over and given a five-dollar DIF card to Dunkin' Donuts. This project was paid for with confiscated drug money, and was a great success. Upgrades to our car computer system have enhanced the speed and accuracy of every traffic stop. Our department is currently staffed by thirteen officers, including Chief Bill Tyler. The department focuses, focus continues to be on community policing. We welcome your input and look forward to your participation in 2015. Treasurer. Last year, we separated the position of clerk treasurer into two positions, clerk and treasurer. Bobby Joe Cutler Flout is the city's treasurer. Bobby Joe came to us from Maryland Public Television and brings a wealth experience that should provide value to the city. During her first full year, she's been active in organizing systems and defining operating procedures. The treasurer's job is an important one. She is responsible for the lifeblood of the city. It is up to the treasurer to ensure that the financial operations of the city proceed efficiently and accurately. The annual audit, the budget preparation, grant management, capital project accounting, fund management, and balancing the checkbook are just some of the things the treasurer is charged with. As Bobby Joe has been on board, she has continued to grow in knowledge of the job, and through training and experience, we look forward to more efficient and cost-effective financial management with Bobby Joe leading this department. Clerk. Claire Coleman was promoted to this position of city clerk after the separation- Claire Coleman was promoted to this position of city clerk after the separation of these two positions. The clerk takes care of administrative day-to-day functions of the city. It's the clerk's responsibility to conduct elections and to monitor board terms and to record council minutes. She's also the human resources person for the city. Claire was a huge help as we spent a good deal of time updating our employee handbook. Claire developed new procedures for tracking leave and earned time off and is now accurately reflected. Claire is also responsible for monitoring ethics statement required by the city council and other board members and submitting these to the State Board of Ethics. I've mentioned this is an election year, and the clerk sees to it that those interested in running for elected office receive the proper instructions on completing the applications in ethic form, and the election board is properly seated and functioning. She makes sure the election results are received and recorded and accurately announces the results. Information technology. The city hired Dan Dennis to head our new IT department about a year and a half ago. During this time, we've made great strides in bringing the city's information technology up to date. We still have much to do, but the innovations so far have saved considerable tax dollars. Some of the things that we've been able to address during the past year included a resupped city network, which has allowed us to share a one internet connection. To better protect the city's IT, we've implemented a hardware firewall, a firewall sits between the city's LIN and our modem, protecting our network from intrusions. We've created a wireless infrastructure for the city offices and the police department and the water billing software package. While it has many limitations, it's being evaluated and preparing to upgrade that in the near future. The upgrading of the city's website is still an important consideration, and one of my goals is to modernize the website so it'll even be more user-friendly. Well, we have to complete our work once you'll be able to go to our website and virtually do anything they can do through a visit to the city hall. That is, pay their water bills, sewer bills, pay parking tickets, zoning violations, all without extra user fees. They should be able to access many kinds of forms for zoning approvals, for renting a park pavilion, or to offer input to our city staff, our council, and police. Another positive step was to offer social media links to the city. We are on Facebook, and we have Main Street and Police Department have Facebook pages too, and Twitter. Be sure to visit us, be sure to click like. City manager. City manager's position requires that the day-to-day operations of the city hall are handled in a professional and expedient manner. Our city manager, Henry Hein, is one that holds our department together. It's Henry's job to implement the plans the city council has directed, plans for the city as directed by the mayor and city council, and carry it out within our budget. It's Henry's job to be the interface, the voice of the city to the various county, state, and federal agencies, and to be the final point of contact for everyone else. A project for the future, and one I have mentioned last year, is our fiber optic network. Fiber optics were installed in the city hall, the police department, the city annex. Fiber optics will provide the city with direct connect county services such as geographical information systems, GIS, and the police will have connectivity to the state police information systems. We're currently working with the county for their help in extending this network to our industrial areas. In closing, together, we have accomplished a lot. We've had another big year. For me personally, the experience of my heart surgery a little over a year and a half ago seems to be a distant memory. I feel great, and thanks for your concern. Your city continues to seek ways to provide essential services, and you've come to rely on in the most efficient way possible. Please let us know of your concerns. Council holds regular meetings twice a month, one regular mirror and city council meetings are held on the second Monday of each month, and the council workshop is held the Wednesday preceding this day. These meetings are open to the public, and you were encouraged to attend and participate. You subscribe to cable television. The community media center records our workshops quarterly, and you can catch the action on Channel twenty-three. Additionally, the planning and zoning board meets on the last Monday of the month. These meetings are also open to all, and if you have questions with a new building or zoning issues or business expansion, the board would welcome your comments. And one glad piece of news that I can report is that the Tonitown History Museum, which was forced to close its doors at the city-owned facility on East Baltimore Street due to concerns about the ADA accessibility in two thousand and thirteen. The good news is the Tonitown History Museum has found a new location we open at three forty East Baltimore Street in the very near future. Stay tuned to their website for opening details and volunteer opportunities. That's www.tonytownmuseum.org. All of our accomplishments this year are a result of your support. Thank you. I look forward to another great year in the best small city in Maryland, Tonitown. A small town with a big heart. I didn't lose anybody, did I? Anybody still here?
I don't think so.
At least, no, there's no one.
Thanks.
Actually, we have resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. First, for consideration on Monday, we have ordinance fourteen-two thousand and fifteen, fiscal year two thousand and fifteen sixteen operating budget. Do you have any comments or questions regarding the operating budget? On Monday night. Up for adoption will be resolution two thousand and fifteen oh four, which is the water allocation for April. Also, we have for approval an amendment to Meads Crossings, the Developer Rights and Responsibilities Agreement. Do you want to make a say of order to the council about that, Jay?
Certainly. Everybody's aware of Meads Crossing development and the plan that we have out there, and the plan for that development is covered by a Developers Rights and Responsibilities Agreement, which basically states what the city does and what they do. And it's been very helpful over the years with them trying to make this development work. One of the key things that's in the development that we deal with every year is a requirement that they must record their plats by a certain time. The date's the end of May. And when they record their plats, then they have recorded lots and they go ahead and start building. As you know, we're in a building slump, and we have been for many, many years, three or four years at least, and so they are not in a position to record their plats. If they recorded their plats, they just couldn't do it. They wouldn't be able to put the bonds up, they wouldn't be able to have a builder come in, so there's no way for them to do that. So the Developers Rights and Responsibility Agreement needs to be amended to allow them for another year to record their plats instead of in May thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, May thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. And so that's a standard thing. You may recall, last year, they came in and asked for a two-year extension from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and sixteen, and we said, no, we'd rather do it year by year. Well, here we are, the next year. So that's the second item in the attachment that you have. In reading the agreement, we also looked at item number one, and that deals with the density of the project. And that project out there, if you take the total acreage and multiply it by the amount of units that could be put on that amount of acreage, it comes up to three hundred and ninety-two. They were approved, if you look at the DARA, for three hundred and fifty. They aren't building that many right now. The plans are for about three hundred and twenty-five, roughly. The issue becomes the size of the interior lots. They're not all uniform size. Some of them are larger lots, and some of them are smaller lots. In developer language, larger lots typically are premium lots. You pay more for those than you do for smaller lots. But they have found that the builders they've been talking to, the people actually that build the houses, are not willing to pay for a premium, large lot in the middle of the development. Just think about what you would pay more money for. You want to be backed up to the open space, you want to be backed up to the park, you want to have a nicer view. You don't want to be in the interior of the development and pay the same price you would for a lot on the outside. So what this does is this basically allows them the ability, doesn't allow them permission, but the ability to increase their density in the interior lots by making them more uniform, so they're going to be more uniform-sized lots. The difference between is about nine thousand square feet to twelve thousand square feet and in-between there. So we're not talking huge amounts of difference anyway. This isn't approval to do this. Right now, there's a ceiling of the three fifty, and they want that ceiling removed so that if they can, on the second phase, they could go to three ninety-two. So that's what this does. This was vetted by the staff and by the mayor. We had a couple meetings where they had the rendition laid out and showed us the changes that would be made, and a couple things came out of that meeting. First, none of the exterior lots, the ones that would be larger lots for larger homes, larger value, more tax-based, none of them are affected. Again, they're only interior lots that would be affected. None of the interior lots are going to be smaller than already the smallest lots there, so we're not getting extra small lots in there. And the upside is you would have approximately forty-two more units being built if they choose to do that, and the Planning Commission approves it, which would be about six hundred thousand dollars in upfront revenue for the city, and then an ongoing revenue of probably fifty to sixty thousand dollars a year in taxes, with absolutely no additional city expenditure. So we don't have to add any more water lines or sewer lines or anything like that. If they do it, because I'm anticipating the next question, if they decide to do this and the Planning Commission approves it, because right now it's just in a concept, they do have to provide additional water, they do have to do all the things that they would do for the additional units. So it's not a free ride for them, if you will. They still have to do all the required things, and it still needs to be approved. So that's what this does. In discussions with the developer, one of the things that he told the staff is this, that the first phase, what you're going to see them build first, hopefully within the next year, they have the mixture of large lots and small lots and premium lots, and that's going to stay the same. The builder that comes in and builds it, if they have success in selling the large lots, they're not going to want to change it for Phase Two. But if they don't have success, then they're probably going to look at trying to see what sells. And they say it's completely market-driven. So that's the reason for it. If you're not comfortable with that section, that section can be removed and can be dealt with another day. But they felt that it helps them sell the project because if a builder comes in and buys Section One, which is what they need to do now, that builder would then also know that if that works, they could have Section Two done the same way. And that's the point. There is one provision in here that is not listed in the agreement you have. It's a provision that the city is going to ask for, the city staff is talking about already, and I say going to ask for, there hasn't been consensus on the city's side of whether we're going to do it, but it's a mechanical process. Right now, if you're in the city and you want to get a building permit, you pay for your impact fee when you come in and get your building permit. So that's it. The DARA basically says that when they come in, they get their building permit, but they pay for their impact fee when they get their use and occupancy permit. So before the ground is broken is the standard, and after the house is built is what the DARA currently says. There is no difference. It's basically who basically finances that charge over the period of time for about two months that the house is being built. What it causes the city to do under the current DARA, use and occupancy time, would create another type of process, and it's not impossible to do, but the process right now is overseen by Jim Weprak. You come in and get your zoning certificate, you pay the money, you get your building permit, you go build your building. When you're finished building your building, you call the city, you get your water meter put in, and the public works department goes out and does the inspections and things like that to make sure the water meter's in the property or state. So it would require the city to come up with a new system because there's no oversight from the planning and zoning side at that point in the process. Very simple to solve if we decide to solve it. However, we could change the agreement and not have to do that at all. You would think that that's an easy thing, however, when you have ongoing projects that last for years, things get missed. Even if you're dealing with thousands of dollars, things get missed. And so we want to keep things consistent. And one of the reasons for the change is we have different personnel now than we did when we negotiated this several years ago. We have a different treasurer, and so we would need to get the office staff up to speed. We'll tell you, once the city manager makes a recommendation at your next month's meeting, what we think you should do. But right now, these are the two things that are being requested by the developer.
Is there a reason I can't tell them now?
Well, you could tell them now if you've had your scenario right now.
Well, you know, I'm very much in favor of keeping the process the way we had done it for years. Changing the process, as Jay mentioned, leads to opportunity for the state because we're collecting the money in the end instead of the beginning. If Jim gets in coming in, you need that permit, and you don't pay the money, you don't build the house. So I prefer to have it done right up front the way we've always done it, when they come in for the permit. So we make that happen, we continue with our process, then, okay. Jim, very, oh, he's, see that?
So that'll be added to this. That'll be a number three when you see it next month.
And when we talked to them, it didn't seem like that that was a big problem.
Yeah, the whole time Jay's explaining this, I could just see money dropping through the cracks.
You wouldn't think that happens, but that with change of personnel and the amount of permits, that happens.
Well, yes, and then you're actually putting that into a totally different process. You've got the public works who have, I don't know, eight, nine people doing that job, and they all have to remember when they do this to come back and tell the treasurer that we need, you know, to pay the bill. So there's too many, to me, there's, the more you handle something, the more likely of you're going to have an error. So this way, it's right up front. You want to build, get the permit, give them the money.
So that's what it does. There's a procedure that has to happen. So let me tell you the playing field you're operating under. This change has to go before the Planning Commission. Any change to the DARA goes before them, even though this doesn't really deal with Planning Commission stuff. Anything goes to the Planning Commission when it deals with the DARA. It was presented to the Planning Commission last month, and it will be again heard at the April meeting, so this month, at the Planning Commission, at which point in time they are going to vote to recommend, not you to do this, but to recommend that it is consistent with the master plan. That's their only stake in the game. Is it consistent with the master plan? And whether you record it this year or next year is not relevant to that. And the maximum density is what the zoning is, that's consistent with the master plan. So they'll go through the process, and that'll be the result of that. There needs to be a public hearing by you all for this. And so that date that we're working out with everything would be your next work session, May sixth. If you're agreeable to that, we can schedule that, so you have a public hearing. Anybody who has any comments at the time can talk about that. If there are no comments or if there are no issues, you can take action on that at your May meeting, which would be your May eleventh meeting, which would be the last meeting of this impaneled council. As it would be old business, it would be voted on by this council before the new business and the new swearing-in. And the reason for that kind of choreography is that the amendment is needed by the end of May. So it couldn't be the end of the world if you said, well, we just really have lots of problems, and we want to go this. We can work that out as well. But if you don't have lots of problems, it'd be nice to just get it resolved before the deadline. So.
Jay, can I, I'm sorry, can I ask? I mean, obviously, it seems like collecting the fees sooner rather than later is what, you know, you and Henry seem to be in favor of, but is there any reason at all to consider collecting them later? Or what was the reasoning behind perhaps, you know, ostensibly doing it at a later point in time?
Well, as I discussed earlier, that if you're doing it at the end, you rely on a whole new set of people that are handling this issue, and different process, it leads to more error. This way, it's a one-stop shop. You're not going to get a permit without giving us the money.
I think what Joe is asking is why were the developers asking for it in the first place?
Right. Their mentality.
That's all right, that's all right.
So you have, just so we're clear on the nomenclature, the developer is the person that's building the land. They're the people we're dealing with. They're the ones that are putting the sewers in, the roads in. They sell the lots to a builder, okay? The builder, so they come in for their building permit to build the house, not the developer, and they have to put out this money, which means they have to borrow the money upfront. and they have to put out this money, which means they have to borrow the money upfront and put it out to us, and then they have to basically carry that charge until the house is sold two and a half months later. Now, they usually don't build a house until they have a contract, so they know it's going to happen, but if you can imagine you're building 300 houses and you're carrying $16,000 per house for a period of three months, that eventually adds up to real money. And that's why they're saying is, hey, if we didn't have to pay you till settlement, we wouldn't have to borrow the money and incur the carrying charge. So that's the reason why. It's standard in the industry that you pay a building permit, so it's not, it would be a luxury to let them pay at the end. There is no, aside from the procedural side, which is a huge headache for us, there's no money side for us, okay? I mean, we have already advanced all the money to build all the infrastructure, we're paying on that, so whether we get paid two months in advance or not is not the same issue for them. So that's why they wanted to do it.
Thank you very much.
Well, the builder's still going to pass that cost on anyhow.
Yeah, it's all going to be paid, it all washes up, and, but they can save that cost, so if you can imagine, not to put the builder's hat on here, but if you're selling a house for $300,000, that's the market. If you can save any money along the way, that's profit. So they can't sell it for $302,000, they'll sell it for $300,000, and they won't give you a discount if we do this, you won't get it for $298,000. So anything they can defer is more to their bottom line. And, you know, that makes sense, but we got to see at what cost is it, talk to the city, and the cost for us is, as the city manager said, it's air and it's hassle, and it creates more work for the existing personnel that's not necessary.
Is this something that has to be negotiated with the developer?
The third point we're talking about right now? We've already talked to them, and they're agreeable if we wanted to do that, so.
And that's really one of the reasons why, I mean, they're not objecting to it, and this is our normal process, that's why I'm just...
It would have been in the agreement, but the timing of getting the agreement into the agenda packages last week to get, just wouldn't allow a redraft of the agreement after our last negotiation, so. So they're okay with it, if they said it's something you want to do, they don't have any problem with it.
A question about some discussion on adding a public parking impact fee.
We talked about that with the staff, and if you read the DARA, there are two provisions that relate to impact fees. One of the reasons for the DARA was it locked everything down, just like if you were going to have a contract to do something, you'd want to know what the prices are going to be that you're going to have to pay so that you don't get to the end and have the prices increase. So it locked all the costs down for the water and the sewer and the police impact fees that people pay us. Locked down, that's basically the way it is. And it said, we can't add any additional impact fees to this development that don't apply to everybody in town, every development in town. So the park impact fee, and I'll go off on park impact fee in a second, but...
Public parking, not park.
Public parking, parking, well, we'll go park and public parking. The public parking impact fee would apply to every development in town. And when I say every development, when people watch this on TV, it is not the people that live here already, it is the people that are moving here when you buy a house. So impact fee, because we consider the traffic here adequate, and with more people, it becomes inadequate, and then they pay to make more parking spaces. So they understand, this developer understands that, yes, there will be a parking impact fee, and it will be applied across town. We haven't figured out how to do it and how much it's going to be, that's the trick of it, but there's no problem that it's not covered in the DARA. So, and while we're on that subject, parking, we'll go with park. That's the same issue, is that we have the ability to institute new fees, and one of the fees that we've talked about is a park impact fee. Now, I know you all think we have a park impact fee now, but we don't have a park impact fee. We have a fee in lieu of, meaning that a developer is required to give so much open space, and in our minds, we consider open space parks, and that's not necessarily the case, okay? But let's just say they have to give a percentage of open space to the city, and if they give that percentage, they don't have to pay any money. If they don't give that percentage, because let's say it's a small little development, then they need to pay the city some money, and that money goes into our park, park impact fee. That's not a true impact fee. A true impact fee means we have a certain amount of park amenities for the people that live here, and when you add 100 new people, we need the equivalent of 100 new things, you know, whether it's another acre of parks or another jungle gym. Imagine 100 kids playing on the same jungle gym we have, we may need two jungle gyms. So that means that the developer would have to pay for that impact. And again, we need to examine that across the city because we might not need new acreage, maybe we have enough to mow, maybe we have enough, maybe we have enough ball fields, but the idea is we need to have something so that the citizens that live here do not continue to fund new parks, because new citizens come should help pay for that. And that's more of a difficult calculation to make, but it's something that's being discussed. And that's not covered in this agreement either, because this agreement covers the specific fee in lieu of park impact fee that we've already talked about. They do not have to pay that because they are giving us open space out there. And so just so I wrap up the whole discussion, open space does not equal recreation space. If you have a nice level piece of land in your development, and it's perfect for a soccer field or football field, and you're a developer, you want to build houses on that nice open piece of land because that's what that's good for. And what do you want to give the city? You want to give the city the stuff you can't sell, and so the city will mow it, and maybe they can put a jungle gym on it or a mini soccer field. And that's been the mentality. We need to change that, we need to get the prime things so that we can have good parks. And they try to accomplish that out there to some extent, but it's not our vision of parks, it's their vision, if that makes sense. So we don't need any more acreages to mow, maybe. We may need more amenities in the parks we have, and that's what the fee is supposed to do. But all that is not covered under this agreement before you. It's, that's something we have lots of homework to do.
And Jay is very right about, we have a lot, we probably have 40, almost 100 acres of undeveloped park. We've got park down, detached Memorial Park, we just bought another 48, 40 acres adjacent to the Bollinger Park. Those lands have to be developed, we only have the land right now. We have to put the amenities onto it. And so we really need to get some help in paying for this. And I think that, you know, we need to find a way to get that from new development, they are putting the impact on us.
Are you all okay with the public hearing being the date I stated was May 6th?
Yeah.
All right. We'll guess so.
Hey, let's have the city managers report, Henry.
Well, I don't know how I can do any better after your elegant speech, but I can add some, some information to it. You know, where you're talking about things we're going to do, here are things that are done. And believe it or not, I hate to say this, but April 17th, we should have well 17 online. MDE is coming here to do the inspection, there's a couple of things that we need to do in preparation of that, coordinating the lines and things like that, but 17th of April, now not to say that I haven't been disappointed in the past by putting a date, but that's really the latest thing. The fiber thing, and I wanted to ask, I wanted to talk to you, have you had a chance to talk to anybody down there, whether this is really dead?
No, I was going to ask you to please change this status because it makes it sound like it's dead, but it's not.
Okay, good.
They're just not going to do the underground, they're going to do the poles.
Right, right.
And they're waiting to see who owns, there's several holes, they have to see who owns what so that they can wire. Now, I can check on the status, does he, has he found that out yet at my next meeting?
Right, thank you. And you're right, the status is...
Yeah, this, this status makes it sound like it's dead, and it's not.
Right, you're absolutely right, it's not, the conduit portion is dead.
Okay.
All right.
And I will make sure you have a better status for this next time.
Okay. We're still, as Mayor mentioned, we're looking at replacing our water billing system, and we're in the process of developing the requirements that we can put out to bid. Funding for that does not occur till after July 1st, so we can do a lot of prep work, we can go out and maybe even do some bids, but we can't fund it till after, you know, July 1. Oh, the other thing is that, you know, we're also out to bid on, and you see it in the paper within the next couple of days, the Roth Avenue part, that's going out the door. So there's almost, there's almost another complacent to your, your thing. And what you have before you, sitting here right now, is, I believe it or not, our mowing contract is up, and these are the bids that we received. And Bob has, you know, provided his justification, and on Monday, I guess, after you review this, we'll probably select a contract.
And in case anybody's wondering, Bob did talk to me about this. As you can see, one of the third contractors just way out of the ballpark with the price. The one in the middle, even though it's the lowest, he was skeptical about this one because when this contractor came out to look at the area, he commented that it was a lot.
Yeah.
And he wasn't sure if he was going to bid on it. Lo and behold, then we get a bid, so Bob's not too comfortable with thinking that this one can handle the job. And Eckert, we all know, has done it before, can handle it, even though he's a little higher, they've got a little better relationship, and that's why he chose that one.
Well, there's, Bob talked to me, we talked about this as well, and one of the things that we talked about today is, as well, is what makes some of the differences is the the cost per, you know, cut.
Extra, extra cuts.
The extra cuts. It turns out that, you know, that's a lot in comparison, and on average, we do four of those a month, so.
And the others wanted double, those extra cuts.
Right, right. So...
That's why he's picking Eckert.
That's on for your consideration for Monday.
Just, just a comment, I, I know Bob's thinking on that, and I guess I agree with it to an extent. But after the struggles we've had trying to deliver a balanced budget, we all know how tight money is. I, I don't see spending any more money than we absolutely have to. The other side of it is, is if the contractor can't live up to the commitment, then we simply go to the second bidder and say, contractor couldn't live up to the commitment.
One other thing I did forget, the person who's doing it now didn't bid at all.
I understand.
So we're thinking maybe he lost money on it.
I don't know, yeah, that's true. But again, I, that's just, just my opinion, I, you know, there's, there would be nothing, there'd be no harm, no foul, if we began with the low bidder and he couldn't perform because there's other bidders to take place.
I think the, the thing that's important to remember here is this extra.
Yeah.
That's very quickly...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That could surpass...
And I'm sure that's what's in Bob's mind.
Right.
Henry, it's not on your report, but it's on Dan Dennis's report, I have a question. I got a call today from a student on a scholarship program, I'm always getting these calls, they can't find it on the website.
Oh, okay.
So, okay, a few calls back, I knew exactly where it was, it was in my memory, I could quote it to him. I get a call today, and something said, go look, and sure enough, it's not there where it was.
Okay.
We only got one more month. I would like him to either put it back where it was more prominently, or if he could put a link on the left side that specifically says scholarship act, thank you.
Okay, will do.
Okay.
Well, the only other...
And he's only got to do that for another month, and it comes down.
The only other piece of news that came in hot today is this letter from the Federal Emergency Management Agency. This is to formally notify you of the final flood hazard determinations for the city of Tonton. So we haven't digested this yet, and maybe by Monday, we'll be able to give you something a little bit more, but that's, that's a, something that just basically come in, and it's, it's the floodplain, it's dealing with the floodplain ordinance. So we'll get back to you on that, but this just came in today. And that's all I've got.
Questions for Henry, or questions on the departmental reports?
I have one on the Parks and Rec report, I think it's this Saturday with the baseball opening.
Yeah.
They have a time on there, is that noon?
It's, I have 11:30 because...
Oh, 11:30?
They asked Bob and I to come throughout the first pitch, and they assured Bob he would be done at 12:15, so I'm thinking...
I think, I think I got an email from Mr., what is his name, Richardson?
What did George say?
That it was 11 o'clock.
11? I'll find out and send everybody an email to be exact.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Also on Parks and Recs, Bob and I went to the Youth Advisory Council meeting at the library last night, there were about five students in attendance, I think there's normally about 13 of them, there were five last night. And they came up with what we thought were three nice projects that they'd like to do in the park. We are still coordinating dates with the sports programs to make sure they don't coincide, but one of the, the things that they like to do, they're calling a color run.
Oh.
And for July 2nd, no, 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 the color run is in August. We're thinking August 29th. On July 2nd, they'd like to do a water balloon battle. And they can't advertise it just yet, but Halloween or the week of Halloween, they want to do a zombie walk. We thought they were all, they're, they're pretty excited about all three of these events, and we thought they were nice events. She's putting together, the coordinator, Dolores Schuler, is putting together flyers on all of it. She, I actually got an email today, she wanted our opinion on the flyers, I just had, you know, one little small opinion. The Athletic Association meeting is next Wednesday, so we want to run it by the committee to see if they have anything to add. But they're, they're handling all of this, they could use a few volunteers, but they seem to think they can ha, they can handle it all. And what we're going to help with is publicity, because we want to get it to everybody that's around us, you know, the more, the merrier. So it was a good meeting.
I, I asked our runner here to provide some color commentation on the color run. He knows what it is.
Oh, he knows, you like that?
No, I don't.
You, you want to organize a 5K or something?
It's where you wear the white t-shirts and they spray with, throw color at you.
That's not for me. I'll be, I'll be...
Yeah, they could use you.
They, I found the email from Mr. Patterson, and the opening is 11:30.
Okay, I had it right, 11:30.
On, uh...
Saturday.
Yep. Field number four, that's another bit of information you probably need.
Field four?
All right, how about the legal report, Jay, what do you have for us?
Okay, let me first tell you that I'm not into the color runs because for my professional job, people throw things at me, so you don't need to...
Should be good at ducking.
But our legal report... But our legal report, you actually had it in advance this month, and you had the matrix of the pending projects. I can answer you the company you have. This month has been spent, aside from trying to mop up the creekside issues, which are related to the sidewalks, the easements, some town road, all those types of things, which they're getting closer. We're gonna be having meetings in the next couple of weeks and trying to do this all. Those have been the interesting ones. But the normal things that we do this time of year are the E and E, ethics and elections. And so, the mayor tonight has to remember to appoint a member from the ethics board, to bring that up tonight and appoint it on Monday, because we have a vacancy, and we'll soon have another vacancy. But we need the ethics board in panel, because that board needs to review the yearly financial disclosure forms that everybody in the city fills out. So, that has to happen. But because it also is election season, they need to review all the financial disclosure forms that are required to be filed by the candidates. And that requirement is from state law. So, state law requires us to review them and send them then to the board for elections. So, what we did, because there is a lag time, obviously getting an election board or ethics board together, five people, and trying to do it quickly, is we decided in-house, we would do a staff review for completeness, meaning that the clerk who got them, went through them, gave them to me. I looked at them and I said, hey, this looks like this form wasn't signed, or this box wasn't checked, because there's many forms to be dealt with. Let's follow up with the person that signed it to make sure that they intended not to check this box, and, you know, reasonable things. And so, we're calling that the internal review. Because the pressure is on for the media center, the newspaper, to find out who the candidates are. And while you have to file your candidacy forms and your ethics forms, if you don't fill out the ethics forms correctly, you get pulled off the ballot. And we want that to be decided very quickly. So, we had this staff review today, there was only one or two issues. The clerk has contacted those people to come in and make the necessary adjustments or clarify. And then the Ethics Commission is meeting next Tuesday to do the final review. So, my review is not the ethics review, that is the Ethics Commission next Tuesday.
Question.
I, uh.
The ethics forms that we fill out here, state required. Same ethics form that you can fill out online? No?
Well, not the state ethics forms. We have different ethics forms.
That's, that was my question, or asked it. Because I fill out one electronically every year for the college. That's different.
That's different.
Okay.
It's the same requirement, but we are allowed to make up our own forms. And our ethics board came up with ours, because we felt that, and it was approved by the state, but it is as least intrusive as possible. And so, that's one of the things we pride ourselves on, is that, yeah, we're still complying with the law, but we're not asking volunteers essentially to come in and lay out those.
But isn't that one a lot easier to fill?
It is so much easier. They even remind me when it's time to do it. And I go through, yeah, that's not changed, that's not changed, click, it's done. And I was gonna say, can't we do it that way?
We could, we don't even have some people that keep photocopies of their last month. So, we really have to get the people on board for.
Talking about. I'm sure that, that could very well be an IT project, but then we need some.
Yeah, but, you know, once it's done, it's so easy.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'm very surprised, had to do that as myself, and it's like, nothing changed.
So, our problem is normally, is, our problem is, just so everyone's clear, is not in compliance, it's in the, the process to get the stamp on it by the Ethics Commission. Because your Ethics Commission, you are all very ethical in this town. It doesn't meet except for once a year. So, when we call the numbers up again, we find out that, well, they're moving out of town, they've already left, and things like that. So, tonight, the mayor needs to remember to make his one appointment, and that will give us a full committee for next week. So, that's all ethics, which is related to the election. And then the election work, the yeoman's work on this is done by your clerk, okay? She has been dealing with all the inquiries, the filling out the forms, the getting everything ready. And as we get closer to May, her stress level goes up. So, she calls me, and I try to help her with navigate through it. But I gotta tell you that she's done a wonderful job.
There's time all the time.
On the outside, just like up on the pond with the lakes. She's done a wonderful job this election, getting everything ready. You're going to have the electronic voting machines again when you have the, the election. We have the election board that you had panelled last month, and have an alternate. We've never had an alternate, just in case they all don't show up that day or have health issues. The polls are open from 7:00 to 7:00, and that's a long day for our ethics people. They get there at 6:00, they have to count the votes. With the election being electronic, there's not too much counting to do. But absentee ballots are the next issue that she's facing. So, absentee ballots will be available shortly, and then we're, we're all set for the election time. There's going to be signs up where there's no electioneering, as there always is. There's a required distance, there's no electioneering, and we usually don't have problems with that. And the biggest problem we usually have is people who think they live in Tawny Town, and they come to vote because they're in the Tawny Town zip code. And obviously, if you do not live in the corporate limits of town, meaning you don't pay a tax bill, you don't pay a water bill, then you probably do not live in the corporate limits of Tawny Town, therefore, you're not eligible to vote in the city election. So, that's what we're gonna be dealing with, and we think it's gonna be an easy process, because we started preparing a couple of months ago. And that's really what goes on. While you deal with the budget, we have those things going on. Just to look forward, so everybody kinda sees where we're headed, the election will occur before our next work session. Right? Everybody got, I think that's correct?
Yes.
Yep.
So, the election occurs on the 4th of May.
The work session.
Work session's on the 6th, and that is attended by you all completely and panelled as you are right like May. Then on the 11th, which is your normal meeting, this board, as in panelled here, works all the way up through new business. That new business, then, the first item of new business is to empanel the newly elected people. So, we'll have three swearing-ins, okay? And we'll have to work the logistics of swearing in the mayor, of how that gets sworn in.
He just goes down to clerk.
Right, whether you go down there, wanna have the clerk come here, but then you would swear in your, your other people. After that, the next item that you will have to deal with is the election of the mayor pro temp.
Right.
Okay? And just so we're clear, what we've done in the past, and we don't have to do it the way we did, so this is why I'm telling you now, you have a month to tell me. But at the next work session, we probably should figure this out. We have done it by written ballot among that board. So, you all write down your name. We don't do, I nominate and second and stuff. You can do it any way you like, as long as we know in advance that's how it's gonna be. But we usually do written ballot, where we have little pieces of paper, and you write down the name of who you want to be the mayor pro temp. And that's how that goes. And that's done immediately after the swearing-in of the new people. And then the rest of any new business that comes up will be there. We intentionally try to keep the new business light, because it's really unfair for new members who aren't in the loop to be able to ask to be doing anything or voting on anything. And so, that's the plan for the election. And I don't know, if there's any other questions, you let me know, did I miss anything? So, that's what we're, we're up to. Do you have any questions on my matrix and anything else?
What's project nine? I have is the print gets smaller, it seems.
That's why they make these.
The tasks get more encompassing. Remember, everything's priority one, so it just goes on there, but.
Is, is there any update on this annexation of those park land that you talked about in my report?
We're, we really aren't, we really haven't pushed Carroll Land Services. It is just a matter of getting the written description of the park. Everybody's in agreement. It's not just the town land. There's a sliver of land that used to be the state highway that was basically acquired by Larry Flickinger, who owns the property on between 194 and the railroad. When he, when he acquired that one piece of land, that was outside the town, and now it's part of his land, so the boundary kind of went there. So, there's a sliver of land that Larry Flickinger must also be a part of. He's okay with it, so it's just a matter of process. And quite frankly, we just don't have enough hands on deck to deal with this annexation, and the budget, and the election, all at the same time. You had a question?
Uh, project number nine, what's that?
We talked about, and I haven't, again, done that at this point. We talked about a situation where if a planning commission member or a board of zoning field member.
Oh, you mean a person move, oh, okay.
Then they would be removed. That is just a matter of putting in and taking.
Yeah, I just, when it just said removal, I didn't.
Right.
And it said personnel removal, it would be.
We've had that issue already, again, I mean, where we have, you know, there's the noncontinuity of the planning commission, and then the board of zoning appeals. We were getting a hearing together. And getting a hearing together for the board of zoning appeals is worse than herding cats. I don't have to do it, Clara, again, has to deal with that. But trying to get enough members there that commit to come, because this is something where an applicant is paying to be here, and if we don't have people post, we can't have the meeting. Or what's worse, if you only have three people show up, then you could have a two-one vote where their application could be turned down. So, we really need to get the people who are on to either come, or they need to be removed. You can only remove them for, for good cause. It's really a hassle to remove somebody if they don't resign. And they're on for three-year terms, planning commission's five years. So, it's not like you can do it every year. This will really clear out if anybody really wants to be on because of.
And there are some terms that are coming up. And I, in July, we, you'll have to make some appointments on both the BZ, I think it's, I think both, both of them have vacancies. Or terms expire, let's put it that way.
Anybody wanna suggest people to me, I'm, I'm open. You know, for two terms, I've kinda left the boards alone. And the third term ahead, we might wanna look at some new blood. So, if anybody has some ideas, just pass it along to me. Uh, by, by the way, I plan to nominate Pastor Orndorf Snell as the ethics board person. So, if anybody has heartburn with that, you need to get to me before Monday night. But that's, that's who I'm gonna offer as the, as the member, as the ethics board member. Any questions for Jay? Is there any unfinished business to come before us?
I have a question on the, the check voucher list, actually, the very first one. $350 to Cowell Community Foundation. And it says Dunderhead Bowling Grill and Stonehouse Bakery.
I noticed that myself.
What, what's that about?
Well, I didn't see that, and I will check that out.
Yeah, it's the very first one.
Yeah, it is, 'cause I had that circled.
Uh-huh, everybody circled it. I looked at that and said, what is that? That's all I had.
Any other questions on accounts payable? For approval on Monday night. How about the financial report? Can I sit over that? Anybody have any questions on the financial report? See the fee schedule in here? That's open for discussion, is that for our perusal, or what?
Basically, that's something I try to bring up every year for review at this time. So, we can have something in place by July 1, if there's something. You know, I guess the only one that sort of strikes me is our water shut-off fee. It's, we charge $50 for turn it off, turn it on, and most of the surrounding communities, that's $100.
Well, it, I think it needs, we, we need to spend some time on this, folks, I believe. And maybe we wanna wait till after the new council. We've got a lot of five-dollar fees in here. And, I mean, parking ticket's $20, for Pete's sakes. I mean, you got your five dollars to put in a pool. I mean, it's got something wrong with that, I feel like. So, that's something we need to think about. And, uh, same thing with, you know, sign applications. Five dollars for a sign application, I mean, that seems a little.
Jim, what does $5 take care of when somebody comes in and wants to do a deck?
It's just the, the in-house processing.
I mean, can you process it for five bucks?
A very simple one.
Spend more than five minutes on it, you can.
For, for any, any zoning certificate or permit. And then the charges, most of the residential ones are $5. So, it costs you $10 to build a deck, put a pool in, you know, put a fence up. Those, pretty much anything but in-house residential-wise are all $10. The commercial ones vary a little bit, but.
I was just wondering, did $5 cover the processing fee? Or whatever it is you have to do?
It probably doesn't cover the time involved to, to process it. It, it probably takes half an hour of work to process it, scan it, and all that sort of thing. Yeah, so.
What is ours, like $35 bucks? What is ours, $35? You gotta give it a little more.
I'm much for five dollars anymore.
And that's why I like to get this in at this period of time, so you have the opportunity to review it, make changes, and it'll be implemented July 1.
Okay.
Head start lease, is there any comment or changes that we need to be concerned about? Yes?
The exact same lease that we signed this year. And I reviewed it when they requested it be extended. They haven't actually asked for any changes. So, in the event that you don't have any changes.
These are things that need to take place at the first, at this for years. A couple more meetings to consider this. Any other new business? How about council member reports? I can't remember which end I start with, but. Angelo, you wanna go?
Just one question, when will the draft budget be online, on the website?
Um, tomorrow? I, you know, I thought that the treasurer had taken care of that, but.
I don't, I don't think it's there. It is, I didn't see it.
I thought it was there.
Maybe it, it could be.
I'm trying to think that I said draft. Something's there.
At least.
Yeah.
Could be last year.
At least under current announcement.
No, it said 2015. It's there.
Is it, but under announcement, you should at least have a link to where it is.
It's under, left side of, see, I told you, I've been there a couple of times today. Left side of the page, view a document, and then you scroll down that long list. Is it, no, it's not under forms. It, it's a whole list of budget.
Right.
Yeah.
And then it says 2015.
Yeah, but it's, it's in with the rest of them.
Right, but it's the last thing there, it's there.
That is.
Yeah, but I think you should have a current announcement statement.
Right.
That is, the problem, I think, with our website is navigation.
Right.
Now, it's difficult.
Yeah, I've been on there three times today looking.
It's not difficult to find something if it's old. Okay, if it's new.
Yeah.
Then you have no idea where it is to start with, like a draft budget.
We, we just look at its last years.
I thought also, the very last one, under budget, doesn't say 2015?
We're in at 515 now.
15 now, yeah.
It should be 16 now.
It should be 16.
Okay, it should be 16, okay, that's, it's not there then. Okay.
It'll be there.
And at least under current announcement.
Yeah.
Put a link to it so they can find it easily, if they want to.
Okay.
So, that's two links.
Can I guess, Jim, you can talk about last night's meeting, which I think was super good.
I don't have anything further to add.
I wanted to mention, you can mention more about last night's meeting, but I wanted to mention, too, this was Commissioner Wance's town meeting. And I think our police department, you weren't there, were you?
No, I couldn't make it last night.
They got a great pat on the back from both the sheriff and from the district attorney. He highly praised them. There was a lot of other things that went on, it was a fantastic meeting. We'll let Jim talk about the rest of it.
I was pleased to have one of our officers there, too.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Psych dolls.
On our police department.
I just wanted to make a reminder on the youth academy coming up, police youth academy that you mentioned in State of the Union, or State of the City, uh, address. April thirteenth is crime scene processing, April twentieth is criminal investigations, April twenty-seventh is DUI traffic enforcement, and May fifth is SWAT, and, uh, session times are from seven to eight-thirty.
Again, this, this involves middle school students that, uh, come to the police station and, and get exposed firsthand to, uh, police techniques and investigations and so forth. It's something we've been doing for the last several years, and it's always proven a very positive thing for the community, so I'm glad we're continuing that, too.
A couple of brief things. Uh, if everyone remembers, a couple of months ago at our, uh, at our retreat, uh, meeting, we talked about an incentives-based facade campaign, um, and I was just wondering if anybody had given that any more thought, and if not, I think we should, I think it was a good idea or a good time to start moving forward, that maybe putting together a committee, getting in touch with Nancy, and to see where we can take that. Um, I ran into another gentleman at the grocery store who was also interested to know if there had been any progress on what was going to happen to the Old Sheets location.
He spent an awful lot of time in the shopping center.
Every, every time I go to the grocery store...
Well, typically, typically, those things are really held pretty confidential, because it's real estate, so if I knew, I couldn't tell you.
Gotcha. I received, uh, two compliments about the Wine Fest with the winter being over and the warmer weather coming, coming on now. People wanna get out, and they're looking forward to next year's, uh, Wine Fest. Um, and the only other thing I had was the question about the opening day ceremonies on Saturday, and that's eleven thirty? All right. Yep, that's it.
My comments just, in addition to Carl and, and the, uh, Commissioner Wance's Tawny Town meeting, I, I thought it was pretty well-attended. I, I was, uh, uh, thought it was informative, and, uh, again, got good compliments for our, our police, and of course, it was more, it was for more than just the town. It was for the Tawny Town area, and there were, there were folks that were concerned with gravel roads and things like that, that, um, we don't have to be too concerned with, but, uh, all that was, all that was interesting. Uh, there was, just to set the record straight, there was some innuendo that the stormwater management plan that, uh, prevented the new parking lot from being constructed at the senior center was somehow our fault. Well, it wasn't. That MDE had to do, that caused the shots there, not us, and, uh, state highway caused the shots when we, when we were, when they wanted to hook into it, so we had very little to do with that, although we got blamed for it. But that's neither here nor there. Uh, we do need more parking space up at the senior, so there's no question about that. I hope we can get that resolved. I spent this morning, uh, from ten to eleven on a conference call with the, uh, MML Legislative Committee, just kind of a last-minute review of the various bills that we have, uh, have dealt with over the, uh, course of the legislature, and, uh, there's kind of a mixed review. We've, we've had some wins and we've had some losses. The, one of the ones that we were mainly concerned with was a, um, bill that would, uh, be rather onerous and, and, uh, having public information, uh, uh, available to people with a very, might be able to recuperate our, our costs and, and not accounting for our time. That, that, that's one that's still, uh, is moving forward, that, that could cause us some problems, although we've been assured that the amendments, uh, that have been added to it will protect the sum, so that's one that's of concern. Um, other than that, you know, again, it's kind of a mixed bag. The, the state budget is, the governor's budget is not complete. They, they, the staff at MML felt very confident that the, uh, state highway user revenues, the governor promised, and I alluded to in my report, would remain intact, so we're, we feel good about that. We're not, we don't feel like they're gonna, uh, snap those up, but we'll see. They, we, there was an attempt between, for Baltimore County and, and Howard County, two counties that don't have municipal, used to grab some of those funds, but, uh, that, that has been resisted, so hopefully we'll be, we'll be okay. And, uh, that's about all I had. Does anyone from the community have anything to say? Anybody have any comments from...
I got a question, Jay. Can you go a little bit about the open, open space, uh, for some, on recreation purpose? Uh, is that open for other people in the community to use that recreation?
It is, it depends on what it is. My understanding is they're gonna have a clubhouse and a pool, and that would be private, but if you have a parkland out there, uh, and I don't know exactly what you have, my understanding is some type of field, that small soccer field or something like that. You know, there's supposed to be some type of field that they weren't gonna develop that we could put a soccer field on. That would be open for everybody, the cop lots and things like that. Again, I don't know.
Well, if you recall, several years ago, there was a developer come in here, had a private, uh, playground in his development, which he called a prime. Uh, people outside of development couldn't use it, wouldn't welcome. But he was here and asked for money out of park recreation funds for equipment. You know, I maintain then that if, uh, if my money, the public money, you put swing in the development, I'll be able to go there and swing on it.
And you can't...
What, how's your feelings now when you're talking to this developer? Have we set precedent now where we have to do the same thing?
Well, I, I think we were talking about Metta Brook back then, and the issue of the town matching some money or paying for things, and that is an open park. Now, the reality is somebody from in-town driving there to go to that is unlikely, but if they wanted to do that, they could. You know, it's designed to be close to the houses that are there, so they can walk to it if they want to drive to the park. And that at the time was the reason the council made the disbursement, saying it's public, it represents those people. Despite what they say it's, it's private, it's still a public facility. Um, that would be the same at this park, this, this development. However, I think if you showed with your towel and your sun panel, and you get into the pool, people would probably say, "No," like, "care of this," and everything. But, yeah, if those parks are public and fences, um, they are, even if they're maintained by a large association, they are open. Uh, the reality is most people aren't gonna drive there to use those.
You don't like to show a kid within a hundred feet of the development, that might...
Right, and then that's the purpose. When we, when we look at parks, not just our town, but every town, you wanna say, "Hey, if I live there, I don't wanna have to get a car and drive to the main park of town to take my kids, so they can swing on the swing for about ten minutes until they're bored and want to go home. I wanna just walk down the street and go on this close bar and put in dinner or whatever." And that's the, the point of that. You'd still be putting all-town major money on recreation that's centralized, you know, like pavilions and for things we do. So, so, yeah, I mean, I hope I answered your question, that despite that they think it's private.
Just so the government knows that.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second. Gary, thank you all.
Same guy.
Close back. The doctor's gonna get here.